Call the meeting order, please. Call roll.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Reno?
Here.
Dr. McFadden? Mr. Monk? Ms. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Quorum has been established. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, we remain nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, Citizens' Comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens of Mount Clemens Community School District, can address the board with any questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Also, be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a response to your particular inquiry here this evening. And last, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for Citizens' Comments. The agenda is still open for Citizens' Comments. Last and final call for Citizens' Comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda along. Next on the agenda, action items. Item five. Under the consent agenda tonight, we have item 5A, Approval of Minutes. 5A1, Approval of Minutes from October 20th, 2021, regular meeting. Excuse me. I.A. 2, Approval of the November 4th, 2021, special meeting. And item B, Approval of Bills for Payment. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
Salute.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
I have reviewed the minutes for the October 20th meeting and the November 4th meeting, and also reviewed the approval of bills for payment. Everything seems, everything looks like it's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Any addition? Mr. Reno?
Was I not in the room when we moved to go out of?
Yeah, you went, you went in.
Yeah, you were. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Madam Superintendent would like to add something under the consent agenda.
I would like to just add an item to the consent agenda. Tonight with us, we have Josie Viviano. Josie will be our new fourth grade teacher, and she just came here just to meet the board and to say hi to all of us. And I would just like to add her new hire to our consent agenda, and she begins on Monday.
Chair would entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to add the recognition of new employee Josie Viviano.
Yep.
Moved by Member Reno, seconded by Member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding amending the consent agenda? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Welcome, Ms. Viviano.
Glad to be here.
We're glad you're here.
We're very glad you're here.
Item six, Business and Finance. These are information coming out of the Business and Finance Committee. Item 6A, Audit Presentation. Madam Superintendent.
So, tonight, I would like to introduce Taylor. Okay, Taylor, I'm having a brain freeze in your last name.
Deener.
Deener, I'm sorry. Introduce Taylor Deener. She is our, she was our auditor from Yo and Yo, and she worked very closely with our business office, Linda Austin, in particular, so.
Yes. Thank you very so much for having me today. Being November, I feel like June was forever ago already, but we're already into the next school year here. But I am here to present the audit results, and I want to thank the business team for, it was a difficult year, obviously, some quick transition and turnaround times that we had to deal with, but everything really went off quite smoothly, as you'll see tonight. So, you can advance for me. Really quickly, I just kind of want to give a little bit of an outline of the audit process. So, we really look at three things primarily. First is going to be the financial statements. You know, those are those numbers that we really dig into and take a closer look at. A big piece of that is internal controls. We obviously can't look at every single transaction that happens during the year, so in order to feel comfortable about those, we really take a close look at the internal controls that are in place in order to make sure that there are no riskier areas that we need to dig in a little bit closer and take a look at. And the last piece is compliance. The federal government and MDE requires us to look at a laundry list of items regarding your grants and just overall compliance. So, those are the three major things that we look at. So, for the actual financial statements, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements this year. That is the highest level of assurance that you can receive. And really, with that opinion, the key parts of what that's stating is that your financial statements are fairly and appropriately presented in accordance with GAAP, and that they are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. So, again, those are material misstatements. We can't look at every little thing, but any of the big stuff definitely you're free The next slide is just kind of a quick overview of some of the audit procedures that we look at. Again, you know, we get that understanding of internal controls, looking through your policies and procedures, and we really base all of our audit procedures on our risk assessment. We do a lot of substantive testing, including pension and OPEB plan testing. We have to incorporate an element of unpredictability into our audit, our, of course, our grant and other compliance testing, and then we round it out with the financial statements and submission of the data collection form and the submission to MDE to make sure you're not late on November 1st, which we weren't even close.
Can you explain what OPEB is?
Oh, the OPEB?
OPEB, yeah. I know that must have something to do with the pension.
Yep, yeah, the pension and the OPEB. So, that came out a few years ago now. It's GASB 68 and 75. So, what we do is we select a handful of employees and make sure that the right amount of retirement contributions are being calculated first in the payroll system and then being remitted timely to ORS, and that there's no issues with any of the census testing either. So, we do dig in deep. We look at birth dates, we look at hire dates, we have to look at a whole laundry list of items to make sure that ORS's testing is then complete as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, let's dig into the numbers a little bit. So, this is going to be your balance sheet, and these are all of the governmental funds. So, the school district has two funds that we consider major funds, and that is the general fund and the debt service fund. The general fund is the normal operating fund of the district. The debt service fund, there isn't a ton of activity in there. You bring in your property taxes and you pay out your debt payments, so nothing too exciting in that fund. And then the non-major governmental funds is going to include your food service fund, and it's also going to include a new fund this year, which is the student and school activity fund. So, that was a result of the implementation of GASB 84 this year, and what that basically did is any of the funds that were recorded as fiduciary funds, so those are items such as, you know, yearbook. There's all those little pockets of money that are sitting out from all those student groups, and those are required now to be presented as a special revenue fund, just like your food service fund is. So, what does that really mean for you guys? You just have to adopt a budget for it. So, that's the biggest change there. There is one fund that is still considered a fiduciary fund at your guys's district, and that is the cable TV fund, because that is still a custodial relationship. The school is more of just a pass-through on that particular fund, but. So, looking at the numbers, the total assets for the school district this year in all funds is just about 5.6 million. The biggest amounts there are going to be your due from other governmental units line, and that is your state aid receivable, as well as your grant receivables at the end of the year. Your liabilities, so these are amounts owed, those are about $3.6 million this year. The biggest amount there is your accrued salaries payable, and that is the summer pay for the teachers and the associated benefits that run through there. There is also one line there that is considered a deferred inflow of resources, and that is the unavailable revenue for grants received. And all that that means is that those funds were not received within 60 days after year end. The standards require us to consider those funds as not being available for use as of 6/30, so we just have to call those a receivable, I mean, sorry, a liability, and not record the revenue for those accounts in this fiscal year. That puts the total fund balance for the year, which I'll dive into that a little bit deeper on some more further slides, at just over 2.2 million for the year. So, next, we'll look at the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. This is obviously a summarized version, but the total revenue for the school district this year was 30.6 million, and the total expenditures was 29.6 million. The biggest amounts are obviously going to be in the general fund, followed by debt service fund. And so, that puts the change in fund balance at $973,000 this year. So, that is essentially the district's net income for the year, if you're thinking in terms of a for-profit. Again, here, you'll see that that fund balance line, the beginning balance, is restated. That is only due to the implementation of GASB 84 this year. There were no other changes to the prior year financial statements on this slide. So, next, we're going to dig into the general fund a little bit more, because that's really, you know, the one you guys have the most control over. So, in this slide here, we're going to look at the comparison to the budget. So, the original budget for the general fund was actually projected a change in fund balance in the negative of 263,000. And the final budget amendment, we, it was a positive 170,000, and our actual ended up being 972,000. So, there's a couple of reasons for that. The first for the revenues, most of that is really just related to the federal grants not being drawn down in time, so that was kind of what that missing revenue piece was on the balance sheet that I talked about. And then the expenditures coming in under budget, most of that is related to summer school. And the ESER $2, that grant agreement has to be, had to have been received by June 30th in order to recognize those revenues and those expenses, and that was not yet received yet. So, it was budgeted for, but it was not actually received yet. So, those are the biggest differences there. This is just a pie chart showing kind of the breakdown of the general fund revenue sources. The biggest source is going to be your state aid, which is coming in at around the 39%. The next largest is your local, which is your property taxes, the majority property taxes. And then the federal is at 16%. So, that one is a little bit different this year. If you were to look at this slide from last year, for example, that would have only been 13% of your total revenue, and that's due to the coronavirus relief fund and the ESER revenue that came in during the year. So, at all my school districts this year, that piece of the pie really jumped up, but we have to remember, of course, it's one-time funding. So, everything's kind of inflated this year and will continue to be for the next couple of years, but then we'll kind of go back to, you know, fiscal year 20 a little bit for comparative purposes. The inter-district amount actually jumped up as well this year, and that's due to the McCombs ISD enhancement village as well coming in. From the expenditure side, lots of colors on this one. So, the salaries and employee benefits make up 62%, so that is really your personnel costs, which that is always the biggest piece at any school district, as you are all well aware. The purchased services is the next biggest chunk there, and that is your transportation, your paras, your subs, kind of everyone else that keeps the school district running. And then the other categories are significantly smaller, but include your supplies and materials, capital outlay, and some of those miscellaneous transactions.
Are you, if you go back to 30, the salaries are 5, 565,806, 76 dollars.
Yep.
Of 30%. Is that, what salaries are those, that for the total district salaries?
Yep, district salaries of district employees specifically.
So, just theoretically enough, it's probably not doing it right. If I take the 36% and the 62% and put those together, I come up with 98% of our funding goes for salaries and benefits.
Which ones were you adding? I'm sorry.
The employee benefits says 62%.
Oh, 26%.
26%.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I thought I heard you say 62%.
Yeah, together, they're 62%.
Okay, got you.
Yep.
All right. Now it makes sense.
But you also said that the employee salaries for the district employees, does that include contract employees also?
Nope, that would be in that purchase services section.
So, out of the purchase service, purchase services section, how much of that is contracted employee salaries?
I don't have that information right available. So, MDE, the chart of accounts doesn't require that sort of breakdown. It only requires the district employee salaries to be broken out, but it's certainly a number that I'm sure we could get for you, but.
And can you go back one more slide?
Yep.
The inter-district amount of 13%.
Yep.
That's because of the ISD village last year, correct?
Pardon me?
That was from the village.
Correct.
So, is that something we should expect every year, or that goes fluctuation by student count, or how does that work?
That amount will be received every year going forward. It was.
10 years, right?
10 years, right?
Yes. Yep, it was new this year, so that's why it was, this inter-district amount basically doubled this year, so comparatively to last year. It's a much bigger piece of the pie.
But the number will change because it is based on our student count.
Correct.
And we also received, just off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly the number, but we received a special grant from the ISD that helped pay for some Chromebooks that many other districts did not get for. It was about, I want to say 118,000.
Yeah, the number would be in the single audit report, but yes.
So, so that would also up that number, and that would be a one-time deal.
All right. So, this slide is just kind of a really good picture, I think, of the last 10 years of how the district, where we started, and how we're going now. And I always love to see any of my districts go from red to green, of course. So, of course, we haven't, Yo and Yo hasn't done this audit for the past couple of years, but when I started, we were at the very beginning of this graph, so it's kind of interesting for me to see, when I started on this job 10 years ago, where we were to now having a surplus of nearly a million dollars is excellent for me to see. My district's doing well. One metric that is always used as kind of a measurement tool is we look at the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. It's going to be quite small up there, but in the current year, that percentage is at 8.09%. For similar districts of your size, just for a metric, the number was 15.91%. Statewide, it's 15.89%. So, MDE always kind of recommends that 15% mark. Of course, everyone would be there if they could, but especially a district just coming out of deficit the past couple of years, seeing that in the 8% range is actually a very healthy number to see, so. Another cool metric we like to look at is the per pupil analysis of general fund revenues and expenditures. So, this year, we're going to see that big spike. Again, we have to remember, that is one-time funding. So, all of my districts this year, this graph has just been going off the charts, basically, and it's great to see that you can spend that money on those per pupils, but of course, we have to remember going forward, we're probably going to start sinking back down. All right. Any further questions on the actual financials?
Yeah, I got a question. How sustainable is this fund balance going forward?
I, I think.
Two years, three years?
Definitely through, we're going into SR2 funding, and then we're going into our SR3 funding, which is definitely going to be a significant chunk of change for the district, as well as all districts across the state. So, that's definitely going to hold you out until September of at least '23, so we've got that chunk. The good thing about that is, though, you know, it is an expenditure reimbursement grant, but then you don't, you have that money, that those expenditures would be there whether you had that money or not.
Oh, yeah. No, that's why, that's why I asked.
Yes.
Is, you know, how sustainable is that, because we won't be getting that money?
Yep, but the good thing is, too, you can then divert some of the money that you would normally be spending on those expenditures to things to enhance the district, so, you know, draw more students in. So, that is kind of the idea of creating those new programs, hopefully. You know, there's a little bit of everything that goes into that, and sitting at, you know, a million-dollar fund balance, of course, we'd like it to be higher, but again, you're a district that came out of deficit, you know, just four years ago, so.
So, you're looking at '23, we need to really start thinking.
Yep. Yep.
What?
Right. All right. If you want to advance for me. So, the next piece is looking at those internal controls and compliance. So, from a financial statement perspective, we did have two items that we were required to report on. The first is related to audit adjustments. So, there were two material items that were found that needed to be adjusted during the year, one of which was in the food service fund, related to the federal commodities. It's a revenue and an expense, but neither side was recorded. And then the other side was related to investment balances. So, these are actually investments that are carried by the district in some of those special revenue funds that I talked about earlier. So, those were not being recorded on the books previously, and one of those investments is actually in a stock that this price really went up this year, so when we went to record it, it ended up being a material adjustment to record that balance. The budget overage, the second comment there, kind of ties in with that first one, because that food service extra expenses weren't reported, when we did record it, it then threw the food service budget out of whack, so. But those two items.
Are these, excuse me, are these addressed in the single audit report?
Yes, they are.
10 and 11?
Yep.
That gives you the one of 10 and 11.
Yep. In terms of the federal awards, we did audit two programs this year as major programs. They are the coronavirus relief funds, which was received in the July and August state aid last year, and then the education stabilization funds, so that includes ESER and GEAR. In total, those were about $1.8 million that we looked at, and in those, we had no comments on, no material weakness, significant deficiencies, or material noncompliance. And I really do think that that deserves kind of a round of applause. Those programs were brand-new this year. There was zero guidance put out when the money came funneling into the school districts. It was December 27th when they decided to change the rules for January 1st, so there were a ton of moving pieces. So, it really, it does deserve, kudos to the business office to keep up with those standards because it was a lot to take in. So, kudos to them for no issues with either of those programs.
Good job, business.
And the last item is the governance letter. So, in your guys's packets, this would be the smallest report. It's just a letter to you guys. And this is just some of our required communications that we have to have with the board. The standards tell us to. So, this would include any significant estimates that we have, any audit adjustments that we have to include, any upcoming accounting standard changes. The biggest one coming out will be leases next year. Those will be required to be carried on the statements versus just a footnote disclosure, but we have a year to figure that out yet, and then. It does also provide us an opportunity to provide a few more recommendations, and we did have two this year. The first would be on the Title I parental involvement. So, Title I requires you to budget 1% of your award and then spend 95% of that 1%. This year, it is incredibly difficult to spend any of that money because we can't meet in person the majority of the time. So, trying to get parents involved digitally and spend money on that is not the easiest task, but it is still a federal compliance requirement, so we still had to report on it. The next item was the Federal Procedures Manual. Again, the feds require certain procedures to be documented. It was just slightly outdated. It had been updated maybe in 2018, I think, was the last time, some broken links, some old language, so we just recommended that that gets updated to bring it into compliance. But these were two minor items that we are just recommending for further consideration. Outside of that, that is my presentation for you guys, and again, I just want to thank the business office for your pivoting, I will say that very quickly, and getting our audit completed and submitted on time. So, it's never fun for me to be submitting an audit on Halloween or anything like that, so we got this one well done in advance, so always good for me, too, but.
Any questions by the board members? As I was moving from there, so I could see, you were mentioning something about athletics and reporting. Can you go over that again, because I was moving and getting?
The GASB 84?
Yes.
Yep. Yep, so there was a new standard change that actually came out last year, but then because of COVID, they let us delay it. So, we implemented it this year, and so these are the accounts that were previously, if you were to look at your financial statements last year, they'd be in a fiduciary fund statement, and it's all the items, I can't think of all your guys's off the top of my head, but it's those small little accounts, you know, the class of 2020, the yearbook fund, the drama club, those type of funds that carry balances. And what this statement did is it required those funds to now be in a special revenue fund, which just means that they get reported on the face of the financials, and you have to budget for them, and that they would fall under the same compliance requirements as the other special revenue funds. But outside of that, no real significant change, not from an internal reporting standard at all. We just kind of move them into our statements.
So, help me out, just, what do you mean, special programs or something? Are any fundraising activities, should that be funneled through a certain specific account that we, that the business office knows this money came in for the pizza drive at the third grade class at Seminole, instead of that going, you know, to the building principal or something? Are you saying that those kind of projects and those kind of money trails, they should be some, come through some, a central accounting system?
They probably already are. There's several accounts that are used for these type of, but they're just an in-and-out account because that's all. The whole point was that, you know, the district is really just acting as an intermediary. You're bringing in the money, and then you're paying out the money, but because the district does have, does have that involvement, you know, it's the district's final say whether or not you can actually purchase that pizza with that money that came in, and it is the district's responsibility, too, to make sure that you're not using that money inappropriately, using it illegally. So, because that district control piece is still there, that's why it has to be recorded on the face of the financial statements now.
So, any fundraising activities that, whether it be for the volleyball team, the football team, the chess club, all that money should be funneled through an account that the district can account for. You don't send it to a PayPal app, to Joe Jones, you know, the volleyball coach. Those are, I'm just trying to understand.
Yep. Yeah, if the district ends up having the final say on where that money is going to be spent, then yes, it should be flowing through one of these accounts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We also have a policy pertaining particularly to that also, whereas that, whether it's a coach, whether it's. Whereas that, whether it's a coach, whether it's principal, whoever, they are to let superintendent know, superintendent is to bring it to the board for approval. She gets assigned off and then everything is through the business office.
Yep, and that was really the point of the standard too, was just make people more accountable for these funds, so.
Now, you said that's only if the district has a say of how those funds are spent.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yep, that's really the sticking point, is that administrative control is, if you read through the law, that's the big sticking point.
And if they don't have administrative control, then those funds do not go through that account?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
But what if this is being funneled or advertised as an activity of the district? Um, again, I'll use the, the pizza, uh, kit. We don't control what happens to that money, but it's been generated from the semin, third grade Seminole class, which is a part of the district. And we hope that the money that's sent in is, is spent on the pizza kits as they're, that they're being generated for. So, so I, I would think, and I could be wrong, that anything that is advertised by the district, even though the board is not for a board purpose, is still being generated by the district and it should be funneled on some, some means of tracking the money to, to ensure that the money is going to where it actually should be, uh, being advertised to go to.
Yeah, if the district ends up cutting the final check, that's kind of a safeguard too. If, if the district is the one who's writing the final check that that money has come in for and then the money is going out for, it should be going through the list.
Makes sense. Any additional questions, comments?
Thank you very much, David.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna leave these extra reports here for you, you like reading for everyone, so. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Welcome back.
Uh, item six B, approve the resolution to collect summer taxes. This is Beals.
So, um, today that we are requesting that you approve a resolution to impose a summer tax levy to collect all of our annual school property taxes, including our debt service upon the property located within the district and continuing from year to year until you specifically revoke it.
You've heard the recommendation, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the resolution to collect summer taxes.
So new.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Are, are we collecting this or the city? Because I remember one time, uh, it might have been the winter taxes or something that we authorized the township or the city to collect it on our behalf, is this the same thing?
Yes, um, the city collects this on our behalf and makes us a check.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, call Rose, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rickman?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Richton?
Yes, motion carries. Item seven, informational items. These items are coming out of the Business and Finance Committee. Uh, are there any questions regarding the financial reports? Any questions regarding the open purchase order listings? Any questions or comments regarding contract listings? Questions, comments regarding facilities listings? Questions or comments regarding S R three meaningful consultations? Is that where we have to go out to all of our stakeholders and talk about, get their input and ideas?
Yes.
And present what we have for the proposed S R three funding?
Yes, it is, and, and actually tonight is one of those meetings, so I prepared a PowerPoint for all of you to, to, you should all have a copy of that. But I would like also for the public to see, and if anyone here wishes to make some comments or have some ideas in regards to this money, I would like us to open the floor for public comments if stage so choose to. We have also sent a survey to all of our staff and all of our parents. So that has gone to everyone and we are having a community meeting on November thirtieth here in this room from six to eight to talk a, a little bit more about that money. Um, but tonight, I would just, I would like to present to you where all of this money that's been coming in from Esser and where we've spent it so far, what's happened?
So my question was a segue.
It was.
Into your present.
It was. Good job. So, um-
I'm just nosy, that's all.
I know you are, it's good though. It's all good. So, um, Paul, could you bring the PowerPoint up, please?
Sure.
And I'm gonna stand over there, so if you don't mind.
You can't leave the ink on your contract as in time.
I have to go to my son's, um, conference, so. Thank you. Thank you, thanks for coming. I know, are we on Jeffrey? I would start except that this very first slide talks about where we're getting eleven million dollars. So, and it's got everything listed out there. So, look, I'll just, I'll grab it just a little further.
Pressure's on, Mr. Shepherd.
Yep, sure.
How about I do my superintendent's comments, could that come out?
Okay.
And then I'll come here and do this when that comes up?
We can move the agenda around.
Yeah, right? Okay. I don't wanna waste any time here. You know, you love technology, I tell.
Yeah, especially if you get a signal.
I know, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it feels like I'm at my house. So I, it just, my superintendent's report. Our first quarter is behind us and we're well on our way into this new quarter, which ends in January. Our parent-teacher conferences were last week and parents should be receiving report cards and progress reports in the mail this week. We scheduled our community forum to plan for allocating our S R three A R P, which is American Recovery Plan Fund, on Tuesday, November thirtieth from six to eight P M. Please RSVP with Paul Shepherd if you are planning to attend. I think I'm gonna start talking slower. Oh, my goodness, okay. November is the month for all of us to say thank you. And I would like to conclude my comments with the following thank yous. First, I would like to thank Raymond James. Ralph Koss is the Senior Vice President of Investments for the generous donation of fifty Thanksgiving baskets for our families. Food and Walmart gift cards will be delivered to homes this Saturday morning. So thank you for supporting our families this season. I would like to thank our student athletes, our coaches and their support appearance for the fall sports season. Our football coach, Marcus Cribs, our volleyball coach, Shay Savvy, and our cross-country, cross-country coach, Maurice Wallace. Our volleyball team had a three-nine win-loss record and our football team had an overall record of four-six. We were one and three in our league. Thank you to all of you for supporting our students. I would like to thank the Detroit Lions. This week, we received a check for fifteen thousand dollars. This grant must be expended exclusively to purchase apparel, uniforms, cleats, and our practice equipment for our football teams, the Mount Clemens High School football team. We're encouraged to make purchases from RIDL, R I D D E L L, where applicable. On January thirty-first, we have to submit a form to the Lions, which will include receipts and invoices for all purchases made, the impact of the purchases on our football program, testimonials from the individuals impacted by the program, and major challenges we faced and the total number of athletes impacted. I would like to give a big shout out and thank you to our business office and Yow and Yow for a successful audit. It was a lot of work, but they did it, and I'm really proud of our business office. They, I'm just very proud of them. Um, and Thanksgiving will bring a much-needed break to our students and staff. We're all off November twenty-fourth to the twenty-fifth and then the weekend. So it's a wonderful five-day rest. And are we up? Yeah. Look at that. I know, perfect timing. Okay. Okay. Um, so this is a presentation, this is a presentation to the board about all of our grant dollars and the community that's here tonight. Um, and really seeking input from all of you and all of you. So next slide, please. Okay, so these are all of our allocations that we have received so far. So the S R one equity fund, and I need to go into a little more detail. Um. No, but if I'm back here, I might not have to have that mask and that would make it a little easier to speak because it gets dry. So the Exor, S R one equity fund was a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars. The gear one, and, and again, I'm gonna go into each one of these quickly for you, is ninety-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine. The C R F COVID fund is, was twelve thousand. The section eleven P was three hundred and fifty-two thousand. The S R one sub-grant, like try to keep track of all of this, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Our S R two funding was three point one million dollars. And our S R three A R P is seven million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand and ninety-three dollars. The total grants that we have been awarded are eleven million, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars, there's an extra seven in there. So next slide, please. So this is the very first grant we got, which, next?
You just had a block.
Right there. Yeah, isn't there any way we can? All right, well, I guess, it was a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars. And we provided hotspots for students and families, Chromebooks for our students in K five, Chromebooks for our students in grade six through eight. We use some other grants to support our twelve, six through twelve students. We also have to support, we also support St. Mary's, um, through all of these grants as well. Next. The next grant was the gear, which is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. And that was ninety-five thousand dollars. And we paid for a social worker at Seminole out of this grant and additional funding to St. Mary's. The next grant was the COVID fund cost. This was our smallest grant that we received, which was twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. And we used this grant and it was specifically for P P E. So we used it to purchase the ten, temperature scan kiosks that you'll see at the beginning of, of each school. We use them to purchase those, um, thermometers that they take the temperatures of the kids as they walk into the doors each and every day. We use it for vertical plexiglass shields for teachers and students' desks when they requested that. Eleven P, which was the coronavirus relief funds, and we received three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. From this, we've purchased the rest of the student Chromebooks and all of the teacher laptops so that the teachers could effectively teach from home. And they were pretty nice laptops. So the S R one formula grant, which was eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We use this for, um, teacher salaries to support our hybrid learning, transportation services. We expanded our firewall so that we could support additional devices in all of our schools. We spent it on manipulatives for our kids so that they could use it at home to support their learning, particularly at the elementary school in math. We sent those little manipulives home in, in packets for all the kids. We bought software to support our online curriculum and learning materials. We had I T support, we hired some extra I T support to support our kids and their parents. St. Mary's got some money from this as well. And this is the grant funds that need to be expended or liquidated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. S R two, this is eleven R, where we received three million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. We bought Prometheum boards, thirty-four Prometheum boards, they're not all installed yet, but they're, they're on their way, they're coming. We purchased site licenses for various software, K twelve, teaching supplies. We purchased a, a, a social and emotional learning program at Seminole called Pretty Brown Girls. Um, and this is a program to support girls, to support our young black girls in, in their schools. We used it also for teacher salaries and benefits. The Wonders Curriculum, which is the reading curriculum that we use at Seminole, summer school, supplies, peer professional, field trips, transportation. We paid teacher stipends out of this grant. We bought charging stations in, for our classrooms. We purchased software. We repaired the, so this is where some of the grant money now, it also can be used for maintenance and facilities. We repaired the chillers at Seminole and King. We're upgrading our phone system, repairing the elevator here in this building. Roof repair at Washington School. We offered more opportunities for schools. We upgrade, upgraded and are in the process of upgrading our camera system. And we use some new credit recovery platforms. The funds in this program must also be liquidated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Okay. So this is, this is the big one, this is seven million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, ninety-three dollars. And this is the reason that we'll be having the community forums, the community meetings, this meeting tonight for input from all of you, the surveys, all of that. So what's appropriate, that what can we spend this money on? Well, there's five questions that we need to ask ourselves as we think about the seven million dollars. Number one, will the proposed use of the funds prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus? Is it an allowable use of funds under the CARES Act? Is it reasonable and necessary? Does it promote equity? And does it support returning students to our classrooms? Requirement. So it's safe return to in-person and continuity of services. We have to have a reservation to address the academic input of our lost instructional time. And twenty percent of this grant needs to be spent to support student learning for loss of time. Twenty percent of seven million is one point four million of this grant. We have to do maintenance of equity for high-poverty students. There's guidance coming, we don't have guidance on that yet. Our plan for use of the A R P S R funds means a meaningful consultation with our stakeholders, our kids, our families, our teachers, our administration, all of our staff, not just teachers, but all of our staff. all of our staff, not just teachers, but all of our staff, and the union. And the unions of any of them, but we only have one union. So this twenty percent set aside, so one million four of this grant. First of all, we need a high-quality assessment to determine the academic needs. Then we use NWEA in this district, as many districts in Macomb County do. We have to implement evidence-based practices like MTSS. We have an MTSS coordinator in each of our schools. PBIS, restorative practice, that's just to name a few, and it's to name a few of the things that we do currently. We have to support students and their families in distance learning with computers, hotspots, software, resources. We have to track attendance and student engagement and monitor academic process, progress. Who needs more help? That's what our PLC work does. Our teachers are looking at data and determining who needs help, who's learning, who's ahead of the game, and who needs some extra support. We use grades, Power School, schoolage reports, and our NWEA. Okay, so how are we going to do this? So this is the first meaningful consultation, and that's the presentation to all of you and to our board. Surveys, they went out this week. They went to staff, students, and families. The community forum is coming up on November thirtieth from six to eight PM, right here in the media center. If you make some reservations for Paul, we'll have some snacks. I just need to know how many people are coming so I know how much food to have. The other is, we're having our very first district improvement team meeting for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year on December first, and this will be part of that conversation as well. So the next slide. So the ways we can spend the Esser Three Funds, again, these must be liquidated by December thirty first of twenty twenty-four. So we can use it to implement key components of effective instruction in reading, language arts, math. We can deliver interventions to kids and supports in small groups, one-on-one interventions. We could add instructional support staff. We could ensure that all students have access to high-quality instructional materials, provide summer learning opportunities, tutoring, family engagement, attendance support, classes for our families in literacy, math, college readiness. We can provide some wraparound services with the support of our social workers. Technology, we can offer connectivity, hardware, software, training. Facility improvements, we can use this to support our air quality and safety. Our roof projects, which are badly needed, would also fall under this. And we can do facility improvements such as classroom spaces, desk chairs, flexible seating. We're looking at ways to make our cafeteria actually a little bit more inviting and some tables outside for the kids when the weather is good for them to go outside and have their lunch. So now is the time for your input.
Well, this grant you just talked about, the seven million, spending has to be expended by December thirty first, twenty twenty-four. Twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
No, no, this was twenty-four, the seven million is twenty twenty-four. Yeah, the others are twenty twenty-three.
Without being able to see the totality of it, because I can't, we don't have, we have very poor connectivity in this room. Because you, you know...
Right.
That's why we're looking at a half-screen for a PowerPoint. But it, we already have the information in terms of where we need to concentrate our efforts. Because if you look at the NWEA scores, in every topic, at every grade level, we're near the bottom or at the bottom in the county. And we have a very significant high percentage of our students that are not on, not on course, they're not at grade level, and they're in the quadrant that we really don't want our students to be in. So we have more students that aren't achieving than we do have students that are achieving. So whatever directives or ideas come out of this, it should be directed at programs that will definitely get in there and make some headway with these students. There has to be some type of relationships and engagements put into play in order to get our students from where they are to where they need to be. Clearly, that's not happening now. It's going to take greater minds in mind to come up with suggestions, ideas, and how we get there. But when I look at the data and I look at what, you know, this, that's where I believe that this should be laser-focused, pinpointed on going disaggregating the data from the NWEA, look at what, where the students are, look at, you know, their, you know, how their progression over as they matriculate through the system, and reach them. Because right now, they're not, you know, the majority of the students aren't being reached. And we need to be laser-focused. If it calls for more parapros in the classroom, I don't know if, you know, more social workers, more psychologists. I don't know to extent of what the Esser Funds can't be spent on. I know it can't be to...
All of that.
For salaries, to enhance salaries, and it can't be, if my understanding is correct, it can't be something that, you know, perpetuates itself in terms of salary increases and new job positions. But we need to really focus in on kids' needs and not so much the needs and wants of the adults. Because we're here to service kids, students, and we need to...twenty, one point four, twenty percent of that money, twenty percent of it should be going directly, thrown at something that's going to help our students.
Well, I would like to dig, I would like to drill down on some specifics. When I first got on this board, seven years ago, you know, we had one social worker. With the, with the amount of special needs and with the level of students that are having issues that has nothing to do with school, we have had attendance issue after attendance issue after attendance issue after attendance issue. And the attendance has not been adequately addressed, in my opinion. I went to a conference and I talked to Ferndale, talked to a couple of board members in Ferndale. And at that time, they had hired six social workers that they put in the fields throughout the school district. And they seen, not the first year, but they seen improvement in attendance, test scores, bullying went down, suicide went down, all that stuff that affects our kids. And we have never, ever really looked at more social workers in this district. We want to throw, this program, we want to start, this after-school program. We have literally never, and this is before you was here. This is back when Washroom was here, when Bill was here, Teresa was here. And we finally brought on a social worker, and I think it made a difference.
Yeah, since her second year, she's wonderful.
Yeah. But we need to look at more social workers. We need to look at more psychologists. Because we have students that are dealing with issues that has nothing to do with school. They bringing all this to school with them. So now we have teachers trying to peel at that onion, and it's not successful. We have behavior issues. We have fights. We have things of that nature. I would like to see Madam Superintendent and your staff put together a concrete proposal in hiring more social workers, more psychologists that's going to address the emotional needs of our families and our, and our students. Morale is down in this district. In my opinion, we need to hire a outside company to come in and do a survey, not just one, not just one time, but on a continuous basis to see where is the morale failure at in this district? Is it at K through three? Is it at four through six? Is it seven through nine? Is it ten through twelve? Because we send, from my, from my recollection, we send out these surveys. We don't even, we don't even have enough people who answer the survey in order to gauge. Surveys say you have to have at least fifty percent of your population to fill out that survey in order for you to really gauge the morale in this district. And all the surveys I've been seeing, we don't even come close to that. So, no, those are, those are the two things that I feel that will make an immediate impact on turning these, turning optimism around for these kids so they can come in and put forth their best effort, and they can come in and really study, get involved. I hear from my wife all the time. We got some issues in this district. We got some major issues in this district. And I don't, I just don't, I have not seen a concrete plan in order to deal with the psychological, emotional needs of our students and families.
Just to piggyback on what Jason is saying, we, I hope there's some kind of plan that's developed that's going to engage parents, particularly at the elementary school level. Because if you're a parent and you don't know math, you can't help a student do algebra or geometry. But you can help a first grader read. You can help a first grader to write. So if we can develop something, and we've never, I don't really believe we've done a great job with the Title One, the parent component, because we bring them in, feed them, and talk about this and that. But it has to be something more dynamic than that, just gauging the parents so they can help their students. Because at the end of the day, you can only do so much with the students, you know, from seven-thirty to two. And what you're trying to do in that time period is not reinforced or supported or even, you know, trying to, you know, making sure that Joey, if Joey, did Joey do your, you know, did Joey do this assignment, you know? We need to really engage the parents at, you know, at that level, particularly, you know, in the lower grades. Because, you know, they, if you engage the parents, then they could change the modality and the mindset at home. And that's going to help in the classroom. That talks about, addresses the things that Mr. Monk is talking about, the psychological needs, you know, the things that his wife is seeing as a social worker, those type of things. If you can, to get, you know, if we can engage the parent or parents in a meaningful way, because we're all in this together. We need, that's a very, a very pivotal part of the team that we're not, we're not utilizing. They're on the bench, they're not in the game. And we've got to, you know, bring them into the game. Because that, engaging them is going to help the kids, you know, it's going to help the district.
No, no.
You interrupted me, but go ahead.
One thing I don't want to see, that we race to, race to spend the money. You know, we have two years to spend seven point one million dollars. And I don't want us to make a hasty decision and race to spend the money. I like to see us spending money to sustain whatever we're going to build. I'm not going to disguise myself like I'm a social worker or a teacher. So I don't know the problem. I like to see some evidence-based spending. You know, I like to get some, some data that shows what, what does work. Because we've been on this board for a while, a couple of us for a few years. And we talk about the same thing that goes around the table. But we don't know if it's working or not, because the data we see, and like you said, the NWEA, we need to aggregate down to the numbers, find out where the problem at, and then from there, we need to address it. So I don't want to spend this money quickly. You know, I don't want to be like, we got two years to spend seven point one million dollars, let's just do this program, that program, and that program. I don't want to throw nothing out there and waste money, you know? We waste enough money around this district in the last twenty years, building things that we don't utilize, or putting things up and moving around, and it doesn't make any sense. So before we even think about how we're going, or where we're going to spend this money at, we need to really do some evidence-based spending and figure it out. Because, and that's, that's one reason for, I'm pretty sure this is why this came up, where we get stakeholders in the community with good ideals. I don't, you know, it doesn't matter if someone in the community that doesn't even go to the school district. If you have a good idea to help the school district, hey, step forward. This money is going to be helping the children of the city. And that's the problem, you know, everybody want to step aside, I don't want to participate. Well, this is an opportunity to participate and don't participate. We welcome all ideals, but evidence-based, we have to have something that shows what data and what works. So before we spend it, I think we should really think about it. This is the only time, I'm not going to throw something against the wall, and see if it sticks.
I just, just to interrupt just for a second, and something that should have, I should have put in my PowerPoint, and I didn't until you said that. Yes, we do have till December thirty first of twenty twenty-four to spend it. However, the grant needs to be in by December fifteenth. Twenty twenty-one.
Wow.
So we can amend it. But this is, this is the, you know, this is the fest, but the grant needs to, yeah, I know, because we all laugh too. So, but it needs to be in by December fifteenth. So there are many districts that aren't having these community meetings yet, they're waiting. And so, but, but it needs to be in rough form, I know.
Oh, seven point whatever million.
Yeah, oh, seven point one million dollars. But, and, and there are some things that we can do and have been doing. So we can use it to pay for our teachers. So that is, is one of the pieces, because that relieves the general fund. We can also use it to do some facility upgrades that absolutely needs to happen. So some of it can be spent for that, and that, we earmarked some of that for that, but it needs, that plan needs to come from our community. But December fifteenth, it needs to be submitted.
But twenty percent of that has to be for...
Absolutely. One point four million.
Has to be for students.
Oh, yeah, well, all of it can be, but...
What I mean by students is, our lower-performing students, that one point four should be utilized to help them get where they need to be. And that's, that's one big piece, that's twenty percent's a lot.
That's a lot. One point four million dollars is a lot of money.
And like Mr. Monk was saying, with social workers and support for the teachers and everything else, we need to have some evidence-based spending on that. We need to figure out what works. Because anybody can come here and pitch me a deal, and here I'm bouncing around, I'm not the expert, I'm not a teacher, I'm not a social worker. So they can say something that sounds good... So they can say something that sounds good, that, that sounds good, but it could be the wrong thing to do. So I wanna make sure we do the right thing.
Yes, me too.
Actually, we don't have enough time to get sales pitch, to come in and present a sales pitch to the board or to the staff. We don't have that kind of time, that, you know, the, the sales pitch is coming from those watching, those in the community, the stakeholders, and this is an invitation for you to have input. This is an outcry for you to let us know what you think about, you know, what you, what do you need? What do you believe you need, we need as a district to support your, your, your kids that, that come to our schools? And we got, we got a short timeline. So I know there's no canned proposal sitting on the shelf that you're just putting this out there as shadow dress, you know, we just put that out in the public cuz we got this canned on the shelf that we, this is what we're gonna implement and gonna do in, you know, ultimately. It's not that. We don't have a canned plan, that's, that's what we're asking for, input, for assistance. Like I started, it's gonna take greater minds in mind, you know, to come up with the solutions, but we, we, we got those minds out here in our district. We, we've got seasoned veteran professional educators that can provide some resources, ideas and suggestions on how we can move forward in a positive manner to impact all of our students in a positive manner. We, we've got the money, this is our last effort. I mean, you know, this is the lifeline, you know, everybody tell, you need a sign, well, eleven million dollars to your budget, you know, you don't get, can't get a bigger sign than that today, this, this is your life raft. Here, here's your, here's your chance to, you know, to bring yourself up.
So what's it being that we have to make a decision by December fifteenth? Are we looking at a special, are we looking at something, or how it's gonna work out?
If we have to, if the board has to approve the plan that goes to the feds, yeah, we would have to have a special board meeting prior to the deadline of December fifteen.
So the board, actually, the board does not have to specifically approve the plan. But I will keep all of you in the loop every step of the way. And again, it has to be submitted by December fifteenth. We can, there, there isn't any, like with title money, there's rules on amendments. The money comes in, you can make an amendment, you have this period of time to make your amendments, done. This is not the case with this grant. We just have to do the initial submission, so it, it needs to be, there, there need to be some really good ideas in there and some things that we really wanna work at implementing, of course, in that plan. But we can amend until December twenty, thirty first, twenty twenty four, wow, within reason, but yeah.
If earmark twenty percent, one point four would be directly targeted for, used for student growth and student achievement. So we know what percentage of, of the seven million dollars that is. Do we know what percentage we're, we're looking at in capital improvements to our sites, our roofs?
Air handling.
All of that stuff, do we have, do we have a number of percentage that, you know, we can plug in and say, okay, if it's fifteen percent, if it's twenty five percent, okay, that's, that's forty five percent of it is, is already, you know, put in the, in the, in the, in the hopper for an ideas of what to do. Do we have an idea of what we're looking at in terms of the capital needs amount that we can put in, try to put into this program?
So, so we do have some idea for that, you get the, every month, you get the needs of the district in terms of capital improvements. But has something been decided or put into it? It has not at this point, because the whole purpose of this is not for me to come and present a plan, and this is what we need to spend our money on, but for it to get input from the community. So, so the community member saying we need to do some infrastructure supports is, is perf- is perfectly appropriate. And then we can fill in those numbers and let the community know what we've done. The community might say we need to make that cafeteria look like a happier place. And, and then we can fill in numbers as far as that goes. So, so what we're looking for are ideas, not necessarily the number piece. And, but we all know that there are some real needs in this district in terms of infrastructure.
Because when you were talking about what the money can be used for, and there are like five or six, is it relevant, is, is it necessary, is it something, will it make the quality better for, you know, blah, blah, blah? Well, there, with our roofs being the condition they are, we're just, we'd rather get into a rainy fall, and, you know, hopefully it's not a snowy winter, but when it get, there's snow and ice on that roof, it further damages the roof. And that, all that stuff permeates down, and that impacts the air quality in the whole building. If we have mold or mildew, that's gonna impact the air quality in this whole building. So I didn't see anything in that listing that, that said an emergency. In my, truly, that's an emergency. And it impacts the health and safety of everybody in this building. And I, I would, if there's a way that that can be put in, in the proposal or the recommendation or whatever, so that I, I hope that there's some way we could put that in.
So we have the air handlers installed?
I'm sorry, what?
Is that air handlers, handling system? That was installed already, wasn't it? Or is that coming in March?
Okay, so we have something coming here in December.
Okay, so the air handling system would filter that mold, that mildew?
Oh, absolutely, and, and, and absolutely it will. And we've also had, because of the roof issues, we have also been, we've also tested on a fairly regular basis in terms, just to make sure that there isn't an issue.
One of the things I would actually like to see with the S S R three is, and I've brought it up before, is the struggle as a parent to interact with your kids doing math. When my daughter came home with a tic tac toe box, I could not help her with multiplication. It was not an option. And she struggled in math because I was the parent that could not sit down and do it with her. So I'd like to see some kind of parent engagement in reteaching how math is done today and how it's being taught. Because just having that understanding as a parent relieves a lot of stress at home when it's time to do homework. So that is something I would like to see built strong.
Any suggestion, comments, input? Mr. Fullwood.
Good evening, everyone, this is, this is Andre Fullwood, I live at eighty-nine Meadow Court in Mount Clemens. Anything that was suggested was on point between Mr. Rickman, Mr. Monk, Mr. McFadden. And what Ms. Collins even said about the kids and the math and the parents. The social workers and the psychologists are needed bad. And I believe that based on the number of kids, I don't know what's the right ratio for a social worker to kids, but that should be considered so they're not overwhelmed. But these kids are like knocking on my door, Mr. Fullwood, and they're just unloading the issues of life. So they're mine to even stay in a school frame? I got one that's worried about if her grandmother's gonna die and that's where she stays in, if something happens to her, is she gonna be, you know, with some type of foster family? These things are starting to come up, and these are the things that we're gonna have to somehow pour into the families. But when we're talking about the negativity of the city, the school, the district, and I'm not gonna preach, but the Bible says life and death is in the power of the tongue. So if we're breathing the negativity of Mount Clemens, whether it's coming from the student to the parent, and if they're siblings and then they're hearing it, but it breeds. It breeds so that even the, the kids at Seminole don't wanna come to Mount Clemens because they've already heard enough negativity. So somehow, some way, we got to, we got to come, I, a slogan came to me, send them back home. And what I mean is, we got people that live in Mount Clemens who kids go everywhere else. What can we do to send them back home? But if we keep the negativity and it keeps driving, there was a, a football player, and he's talking about the negativity of this and this school, but I said, how can you be a leader that your peers look up to, and yet you badmouth who you represent? That's not a leader. But that's what's happening. And so those that they have influence over, it's in their ear, and it keeps breathing. So what happens to our freshmen and our sophomore? And because we have middle school, what are they hearing? So I know prayer, that's part I know. But we have to change the mindset that this school, and people saying we just need to shut it down, we just need to, no, we don't. No, we don't, I didn't come back here for this. No, we don't. But if we really care about the kids, we gotta go through the family. We gotta go, the math, I had a ninth grader come in, wanna sit in my class, and I was doing thirty-two times thirty-one, and he was struggling with multiplication. So, social workers, psychologists, I'm one hundred percent with that. I know it's a short time, that is like, to me, mandatory. You know, I'm certified in cognitive behavior techniques and things that help them. Was talking to them about self-discipline, learning self-discipline, cuz they don't have it. No structure. Every day is a day of survival. That's what it is in their life, it's a day of survival. And few and far between have a life that they go home to and they don't have to worry about a roof over their head, food to eat, what's gonna happen to their siblings, few and far between. So I'm, whatever we do, cuz this is a we thing, but we have to get to the psychological aspect of it, because it's, it's bad. It is really bad, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback off of what Mr. Fullwood said, the negative talk about our district is everywhere. And I've heard so much of it that is inaccurate information. Can we utilize some of these funds to create, and I know we don't have a PR department or how it would work, but a positive publications on a weekly or monthly basis about the really good things that are happening with our kids, with our programs that we're implementing, student achievement, teacher achievement, teacher recognition, student recognition, and really publicizing the positive aspect of the district?
Yeah, and we had, I don't remember, Jimmy, does it still, uh? Yeah, so he gave us a proposal, and we kinda put it on a back burner because we weren't sure what was going on. But we can, we could use these funds to support something along those lines as well.
You know, I wanna go back on, I'm gonna talk about something else too, because the way people think and believe is like a religion. It's like, it's like a, you know, it's like we're told to talk about finance, politics, and religion. Sometimes you can't change the way what people think. But I think as small as our district is, we need, we need to get great at being small. Work with what we got, be good at what we have, and then go from there. Because trying to change someone's mind is like getting into a fight with somebody. They gonna argue one way or another, it's gonna be a debate. And sometimes you just have to just let that go. Because when we, the marketing advertising is always the same. You know, today, someone's gonna hear you, but tomorrow they're not gonna be here, and the person that's born tomorrow never heard it. So we just have to deal with what we got, work with the present, and just move forward. And I understand about the marketing piece and getting, get, get insight out to the community and everything. But trying to change someone's mind, you know what, just, I like, you know what, it's America, it's the land of the free. You wanna think that way, that's fine, find the facts, drive with it, go on it. But we gonna be great at what we are, you know, we are who we are. And that's why I tell people, we're, we're Mount Clemens, we can be the best Mount Clemens we can be, that's it. If, if that's not good enough for most people, it's okay, go, go where you wanna go. But I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna be, if we're gonna be a small district, we're gonna be a great small district. Doesn't matter, cuz we're gonna be the best we can be.
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't want that to change anybody's mind, I'm not worried about changing anybody's mind, but if we can lift the morale of our kids, if we can lift the morale of our teachers and do that in a positive light by giving them recognition and putting it out there for the community, I think that's something we absolutely need to go for.
That starts right here, though, that's, that's internally. So the people internally that talk bad, those are ones that, that's the survey system. Internally is where you deal with that, anything on outside externally, we have no control of that. But what we do have control of, that's where we need to focus on.
We've got to, I don't know if money can do it, I don't know if there's any programs out there that, you know, to do it, but some way, shape, or form, we have to change the culture, the climate in this district. Because if the culture and the climate of this district was different, you wouldn't hear all this negativity from a football player about the school system, from a parent about a classroom teacher, or, or, you know, Facebook about shutting the school down. There's something that has to, is, is within the walls of our school buildings where that culture and that climate has to change in order to be, impact anything positive for the majority of the students that, that go, go in this, go through our school system. Cuz if you don't change the culture or the climate in this building, you can have all the best programs in the world, and they're just best programs in the world that, that aren't gonna have a negative, that aren't gonna have a positive impact. You know, we, we gotta have everybody on board buying into what direction we're going in. You know, that's what I took out of what Ms. Fullwood, he was saying about the culture and the climate. That's how I took that, you know, that we have a bad climate, which leads to a poor culture and understanding and feeling about what goes on in our schools. Anybody else? Cuz we could stay here three hours and, you know, still, and, you know, because again, we're just having open dialogue, but we're not solely the people that are making this decision. Again, we're inviting anybody who wants to have input on how we disperse eleven million dollars to help our students. We're, we're looking, seeking your suggestions, your ideas.
I'm gonna put on my current hat here. My daughter goes to the school here, and I work here. And what I see is a lot of people who are willing to donate, a lot of people who are willing to take what's in their garage, whether it be books or whatnot, give it to us, and basically try to feel good about themselves. We don't have enough people like Mr. Fullwood here who are willing to invest into the school district. The most important asset that we can get is a person's time and a person's energy towards the kids. Obviously, with seven point one five three million dollars, that's a number way beyond my comprehension. But, you know, donations aren't going to be enough, and they haven't been enough. We've had, we are in a very generous community. We have people who, who will basically give the shirt off their back. But again, there are people who are either unable or unwilling to invest into the school district. They're gonna take their kids, their most important asset, and bring them to other school districts because they're getting a return on that investment. My belief has always been, until there is a problem specific to Mount Clemens, my daughter will continue to go here. Every district is short-staffed, every district is underfunded. Every district has bullying, every district has fights, every district has behavior problems. So until there is a specific issue in Mount Clemens, my daughter will continue to go here. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Paul.
I just wanna just say that I agree with you, Dave.
I just wanna just say that I agree with you, Dave. We need to do some evidence, data-based decisions. There's, I believe we have, uh, and I may be wrong, I think Ferndale hired social workers, Lions Cruz hired social workers, New Haven hired social workers. We need to reach out to those superintendents or to those building principals and get some evidence base as far as social workings and how, how did that impact going forward? I'm just, I'm just talking about that specific one, but I agree with you, yes, we need, we not just, you know, we got throw money, we don't start this, yeah, we can start program, but if we don't have no evidence base, then we just, you know, we just circling wagon, we just spinning our wheels.
Full of supplies and, um, software that we spend money on.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we need to reach out to these other districts who have invested in social workers, psychologists, um, to see, you know, what happened, you know what I'm saying? So, I agree with that.
Are we still a member of Middle Cities?
Yes.
There, the Middle Cities Association with Light Districts, Urban Light Districts is ours. Um, can, is there any way you can tap into them, uh, to see if they have any, uh, any programs, uh, projects, um, information, uh, that we can learn from? Uh, since they, this Association of Urban Districts and that, that, that are like us. So I, you know, would like to use them as, you know, as a resource to see i- if, if they've got some tools in their toolkit that they know is working, uh, in some of their other districts. Um, similar like, you know, Dave and, and Jason's talking about evidence base, you know, to see what's working in, in other districts. Um, particularly districts, you know, that are having challenges, uh, like we have.
I'm just looking, I think I actually have a meeting with them tomorrow. No, I don't, it's next week. I know I have a Middle Cities meeting coming on, so it's like tomorrow.
What in the segue? Any just new comments from, from the audience? We'll open it up again.
It can be a student, a student comment also, you don't have to be a parent.
Our poor one student.
Jake?
You know, I'm glad we're having, uh, this conversation and, and the tone of it. Um, in a few months now that I've been on the board, we've spent a lot of time reviewing student achievement data and it's, um, not as positive as we all should hope. And, and I think an investment in the social and emotional learning and psychological needs of our students is what's going to, to grow that. We already know that our, our teachers, our educators are committed and that there are best practices happening in each of our classrooms. But the first thing you learn in child development, human psychology, is Maslow's hierarchy of needs. When those social, emotional, and, and psychological needs aren't being met, it's impossible for academic learning to take place. I think a great direction is, is utilizing these funds to focus on those needs for our kids. Um, you know, to address the circumstances in their lives outside of the school day, outside of their time in front of an educator. Something that we did in the school that I used to work in, um, in terms of school culture and climate, was a weekly Share the Good email, uh, that had gone out to staff, students, and families where everybody was invited to share a little snippet, something positive about the week. It was then compiled and then emailed back out to all these staff, students, and families. And it, it always felt good, you know, to get a shout-out from a coworker or a parent, recognize a student for something good that they did. That was just a little, a little feel-good thing that we did that contributed to a positive culture in, in the building that I used to work in. That's all I have on my part for now.
Ms. O'Neal, I'm gonna make the people say something.
I, I heard all of your, um, comments and they are, they are all wonderful. And I think the seven million dollars is a lot of money, which the district could probably blow through that money like exactly, a snap of a finger. But what I think that needs to happen is the culture and the climate of the district. And of course, it has to start with the students. But we also have to come back around to the parents. I do believe that, that we need to create some kind of parent academy or something for the parents because we can address every need of the student. But when they go back home in their environment, it's almost deprogramming them to reprogram them. So they go home to their environments, they come back into school, it's like you're reprogramming, they go home, you're, they're being deprogrammed. So it's just like, so it's just like a revolving door. So I think if we get the parents involved as well, like I said, maybe a parent academy or something because, um, we address their needs, the students' needs, we may have to address some needs of the parents. We won't know that until we build some kind of relationship with those parents and try to get them in. I see that oftentimes that we address the needs of the parent, I mean, the students, and, and once we build that relationship with the parents, then we find out the root of the issues. We bring the parent in, we have a parent academy at DPS, so they address the needs of the parents. We find out some things that's going on with the parents within the household. We address those issues and you, you'll be surprised how the students begin to flourish. So I think that's, um, that's a piece of it, so. And it may not take a whole lot of money, it just may just take building relationships with the parents and along with the students. So I think the number one thing is to build a positive culture and climate of the district. And again, we may not be able to reach those that has left and those that are talking negative about the district. People are gonna talk. I mean, we could do all we can here and people are still gonna talk and say negative things. That shouldn't be the issue. The issue is, like Dave was saying, that we just need to move forward and, um, become the best that we can. Stir up a strategy that no one else has, that we just have to find our, our niche, something here that will, um, will keep us going. That's it.
Chris Walker, welcome back. Good to see you.
Thank you. All my fellow board members had great comments, great ideas. I totally agree with what Stephanie said, we have to do something with the families. And, and we, we have to find out what the problem is, and we have to find out how we can help our kids. We, and the culture, the culture of the district and the climate definitely has to change. Just exactly like Mr. Fullwood said, you know, negativity breeds, but so does positivity. So the more positive we can make it, that's gonna breed just as well. Um, we do need to help our kids, I agree with Mr. Monk, they need social workers, they need someone to connect with them and their families. You, the kids spend during the school year more time with us than they do at home. I mean, they're here the majority of their day. They spend more time with their teachers and their, and the people in their classrooms and the, and the social worker or whatever than they do with mom and dad during the school year. So we really need to make this time here count. I mean, we have to connect, we have to be positive, they have to feel wanted, needed, loved, understood. I mean, and that's all part of the climate. But we, there's definitely some changes that need to be made. And I think social workers seriously is right up, I mean, that needs to be done. And then a culture change and something that helps our parents so that we can get everyone on the same playing field and then we can move forward with them.
And whatever the plan is, it needs to be comprehensive. It needs to be able to address the needs of the students that are behind. But we need to be able to address the needs of the students that are at grade level and above because when you pour all your resources into those students that are more challenged, you sort of ignore and forget about the students who are on task, who are on grade level or beyond. So the plan has to be comprehensive. Uh, so, you know, rising tide raises all boats, uh, type, type scenario. Again, I just have ideas of what to do, I just don't know how. My, my role as a board member is to determine the what.
She does the how.
Do the how, but she, but she's in, and we're inviting everybody to be part of the how. Any other questions, comments, concerns, uh, regarding, uh, this whole public initiative to get input?
We did talk about a lot of this during our district improvement team last year throughout the year. We did look at data, we looked at a lot of the things that were caught, and so you had to find a causation. You had to go five degrees from the number to figure out why some of these things might be happening, talk about database. And some of the things that we, you know, some of them can be quite simple, like just simply having food carts on the second floor to raise your access to quality food throughout the day. Not breakfast, they may not want it, they may come in late. Having meaningful food, just little things so they're not hangry, right? I mean, we were talking about Pavlov, you know, the, the hierarchy of needs. We can do some simple cosmetic things that will make it friendlier, warmer, and give them food throughout the day so they're not dependent on having to go to lunch. They're not dependent on these little things, cuz sometimes it's only food they get throughout the day, right? We may wanna revisit having a truancy officer. We used to have a courtesy officer that wouldn't know when the kids were downtown and where they were supposed to be there. Politely remind them, okay, you're not supposed to be here. We used to, was it Mr. Tony? Right, a truancy, we had a courtesy officer who would help the students and remember when they were supposed to, not supposed to be downtown. Maybe look into something, another program, something similar to that. Along the lines of the culture change and being positive and reinforcement, but we could still look into something like that. Getting people, and we, this is something we've all kinda talked about at different degrees, to invest our residents to come back and be parapros like me. Or they don't, we're not, you know, I'm certified in what I do and I can teach two classes, but to reinvest and be able to offer more programs, one of the things we hear all the time, we don't, we don't have enough course offerings. Right? So maybe getting, asking some of our business owners, hey, can you come in the morning and teach a cooking class out of the fax lab? Do we have anybody that has to be certified that not, you know what I mean, to be able to do that, not something else? But to be able, cuz that's one of the things we hear, we hear all the time, we don't, they don't send their kids here because we don't offer enough. So maybe we need to look at more, you know, people like me who can do one or two things and offer a program that way. So we can tell our parents, no, we have these other programs, we're, you know, we're able to. And when people come in here and see this place, they totally change their mind. Right? When you actually have people come in this building and they walk around, they see what's go-, they're like, this is not at all what I thought. I'm like, yeah, there's not fire falling from the ceiling. Right? And they change their minds, so we have to remind them to come here and remind them how wonderful this building really is. And we have to get it back open, some of these other, we, you know, we need to be using some more of this great building that we have. But those are some of the things I know we talked about during our improvement team last year throughout the year. We looked at the data and we looked at some of those things and what were the, some of the causations for some of those. One is just big ones, access to food. You can't think when you're hungry, right? We all know that. So having access to food throughout the day, small meals, small meals instead of a big, instead of one big one. Little things that we can do that, like you said, I mean, don't cost a lot, but the data shows will help us improve even incrementally. So let's look at that, some of those notes from our district improvement team and see if we can pull some stuff out of that, too.
So are you, are you volunteering for the team this year? Thank you.
Always.
You're on the list.
Me and my wife go to Sam Club every week. And for a whole entire school year, we probably, I'm gonna just put a round number on it, thousand dollars. And she keep snacks in her office. And those kids just are in there all day, every day because they are hungry. I had a buddy of mine that that I golf with, his name is Jerry. He donated probably about thirty-something jackets. Literally, almost all those jackets are gone because the students picked them jackets up. They're nice jackets. Those are the things that, like Patrick said, you can't, you can't learn when you're hungry. You can't learn when you're cold. You know, a lot of our kids walk to school with hoodies on. I mean, I see them walking down the street, they got hoodies on. I'm looking at them like. And those are the things that social workers can do. Those are the things that reaching that kid at that particular time, at that particular moment when they need something. They need a bite to eat, they need a jacket, they need, I helped her organize it. She has a lot of personal stuff that's donated, she has soap. She has feminine items, she has deodorant, clothes, the whole nine yards. And we are constantly, constantly restocking her room. And she deals with all the personal stuff that don't even, everything that goes to dealing with what these kids are going through psychologically and emotionally before they even go into a classroom. So, yeah. Yeah.
Any additional comments? Ideas, suggestions? Again, it's not just for tonight to come up with ideas, um, we got up until December thirteenth. Up until December thirteenth. If you have any i- ideas, suggestions, please, um, feel free to contact Superintendent. Paul might answer the phone, but he'll get the, he'll get, he'll get the message to her.
And, and fill out the survey. There's a point, there's a part of the bottom of the survey just to add ideas and comments. So, um, so fill out the survey and then leave us your phone number and we'll call you if you wanna talk.
All right. Done the superintendent comment, all ready? Item nine, committee reports. Excuse me, anything coming from the Business Finance Committee?
We talked about most of the stuff in the Business Finance Committee inside the mission items. I do wanna bring up the discussion we had about, um, um, our, our building supervisors, the principals, were they doing tracing contact, trace contact?
Contact tracing, yeah.
Contact tracing. And just for the board knows, most people that wasn't on the committee, our, our supervisors, our building principals, they doing a lot of additional work with contact tracing. And anybody knows the numbers in the state of Michigan are going up, so contact tracing is a very big part of their day. So there's resources that the ISD is, that Superintendent is working with, providing for them, and also some additional incentives for them to, to help with additional times, they sometimes even work on the weekends, I believe. Trying to get this stuff together. So that came out inside the Business Finance Committee, uh, that was one of the big things we talked about. What else we talked about? Something, um, that was, that was the main bit, and everything else is already inside of up top, up top conversation. So there's nothing additional from that.
Any questions at the chair? Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Mr. Lennenberg, Community Coalition, anything to add? Thank you, Mr. Lennenberg. Uh, anything coming from the curriculum personnel? To be looking out for?
Nope.
All right. I know we don't have a report for Education and Foundation. I notice I say we, you know. Mr. Monk, you wanna talk about the, the, these very exciting policies we gonna have for the second reading and adoption? Or anything, anything new you need to add or anything?
Uh, just one, the one that I sent out the email to all my fellow board members pertaining to the MIOSHA about the, uh, that did come down the pike. So, uh, Neoda did release that, um, so we'll add that to, for the, for the first reading. And then we also will, Doc, we wanna get clarified.
And then we also will, Doc, we want to get clarification on student emails to the meditary. You will get clarification on that, and then the superintendent's going to get clarification as far as for, with her and, uh, Kirk.
Seventy-five, seventy-five, seventy.
Yeah, so we'll get that.
That's tomorrow, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, and, uh, other than that, none additional.
Any questions of the chair?
Mr. Monk, there's gonna be some questions coming to you from one of your, uh, chair committee members, uh, reference to, um, the athletic policy.
Yeah.
There's gonna be some modifications that might come for discussion at your committee first before it comes to the board.
Gotcha.
And also in reference to attendance policy.
Okay.
And, um.
Graduation.
Graduation.
Graduation, okay.
So, just getting your heads up on that.
All right.
We're talking about amending the attendance policy that we spent all that time, energy and effort to implement, implement three, four years ago? Two, three years, you know, that was supposed to be the latest and the greatest, you know, with everybody's input, you know, from around the globe.
Right. Right.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Any additional questions to the chair? Legislative committee, we have not had one, um, at the county level, I think it's next week. Athletic ad hoc committee.
We had a much needed meeting, it was, um, loving and unexpected. First news is about the athletic coordinator slash director, um, that hunt still on?
No, um, actually, um, Pete Trammell accepted the position today.
Well, there you go, last minute information, right off the presses.
Well, yep, I just got it at the end of the day, so.
There you go, Z, just before I got here, got the information. So, we, um, athletic committee will report, we have a new athletic coordinator slash director, Pete Trammell.
Coordinator.
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 Director.
Not director.
He directs his office to call the telephone, whatever, but he's a coordinator, he's coordinator for athletics. We also talked about, um, programs for the fall and the winter. I know Pete's gonna come with additional information, so I don't want to overstep my bounds at, Madam Superintendent, you have anything else to add on that? Because we talked about the, um, the boxing and wrestling and things like that, but mostly on the boxing till we talked about impossible dancing and something else. But I'm pretty sure that he's gonna be running that ship, so him and, um, the principal. We also talked about, um, the study for eight man football. Principal, high school principal's gonna take the lead on that, and he's trying to find out, you know, um, the ins and outs of that, how that's gonna work. Probably will know something in the beginning of the year, when I ask for the next meeting, I'm gonna have another meeting in December. Did I forget anything? Did I miss anything inside that meeting, do you remember?
Think that covered it? We had the little discussion about that house bill, but that didn't cover it. It was a while ago, I don't remember tying my shoes this morning, let alone what happened two weeks ago. Was it? It's been a long week, I know, it's only Wednesday.
Can you email that house bill number, because I'd actually like to look at it and, and get some follow up on it, because that will, that will make a lot of changes for us.
Fifty-four twenty-four.
Fifty-four twenty-four.
Speaking about that, Jacobson, you brought a house bill fifty-four twenty-four up for everybody to know about it?
It's a house, it's a bill that was moving through the Michigan legislature, um, it would just prohibit school districts from using their funds to pay for membership in governing associations. The frame that we, um, discussed it in, in the athletics committee was MHSAA, but then also like ban vocal music, theater, those kind of associations. Some CTE programs have overseeing bodies, yeah.
It's a mess. It could be a mess.
It, it would be a mess, I think.
So, that's pretty much it, I believe I ain't missed anything, we did talk about some about PE credits or something with athletics, but that's something that, uh, superintendent and, uh, is gonna be working out with the, um, principal. But I wouldn't overstep my bounds, yes.
I just want to clarify the eight man football, I, I, my understanding was we gave them the direction to have that discussion with, with surrounding districts that are in the same position as us.
Yeah.
To get a feel if other districts would want to, to take that as well, so our kids can have a competitive season.
Right.
Rather than two or three schools that want to do it. So, I think that was the, am I correct?
Yeah.
It's a block.
Yeah.
Especially within our league, because most of the districts are very similar to us. There were some big powerhouses that didn't belong in our league, we're in that charter league, um, but many of the districts are the same size as us. So, and it might be very beneficial to everyone.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought the league piece up. I did ask or talk to the, um, principal about the league, about the charter league, you know, because I know that's happened before with the last coordinator. So, I told him, you know, look at different pieces, you know, how does that, because it's a yearly type of relationship. It's not like we're in a contract for five years with the league. So, he's gonna be looking at different avenues for that also. Might still be in that type of league next year, don't know, we go and see if there's something better that we might fit in. So, all right, so Pete got his hands full too.
He does.
Yeah, I, I'm glad to see that that's finally being moved forward. I, I know I've not been looked upon favorably when I've openly expressed my concern about our lack of being able to compete because of our lack of low numbers, um, with our teams. And I've been trying to push this thing up the ladder, uh, about exploring eight man football. Because when the last four years I looked at the teams that we play, uh, maybe one or two of the teams that we play have twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty players. But the vast majority of the teams that we play have seventeen, eighteen, fifteen players. Um, and it's just hard for me to fathom that they would be stuck on an idea that playing eight man football is not real football. When you gotta practice, you gotta use the cheerleaders to stand as outside linebacker, or use a garbage can as, you know, set, be a free safety. I would, you know, if you could have live bodies that, you know, you could actually get a decent practice, uh, right now, that's, that's what we're doing. You got eleven players on offense or eleven players on defense, and then, you know, you got five other bodies that you try to fill in on the other side of the line to try to, to emulate a practice. And that's not, you can't be successful with that. And I saw, seen so many of these schools that we played in the last four years have the same numbers of athletes that we have, or participants that we have. And I'm just astonished that nobody has pushed forward that needle to explore, um, eight player football in this region. Because, again, we, we've seen the games, we've seen the teams, um, and it's not, I, I don't want to hear the rationale and reason that it's too, it's cost prohibitive. Uh, most of the teams are up north and in thumb area, that's because that's the only, they, they asked for it, and they, you know, they've explored it and they done it. Ms. Walker's daughter played on an eight player football team. They had a full schedule, uh, they were able to afford the travel expenditures and stuff, so, um, I, I just think it's, um, people just don't have the will to move out of that mindset of eleven, eleven players football. Um, so, I'm, I'm glad that we're finally taking it serious, uh, and actually looking into it and actually trying to, uh, make some informed decisions about it. Because honestly, uh, next year, I don't believe that I could support a, a football team that has fifteen players. I, I, you know, I, I just, at this point right now, if that, if that's the proposal that's brought to me, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen players, honestly, don't think I could, you know, I could support that. We, we forfeited a game this year because we had three of our better players hurt. And the other participants had very little to no experience at playing football, so we decided to forfeit a game as opposed to go out there and, you know, have our least, our, you know, a lot of kids that didn't have a lot of experience or no experience of playing football. And their first experience at playing football for many of these young people is a varsity program. And again, I, I would say it again, that's not safe, uh, for, for our student athletes, it's not safe at all. I'm glad, you know, keep pushing that, because I'm, I'm gonna keep pushing you to push that.
You pushing the same cart.
We, we did address that if, if eight man football isn't something that we want to do, then you have to show us three strings. First string, second, so they, we have safe games, injuries can be covered, you know, practices, they can practice appropriately. So, that, that would, would definitely be the consideration is if we have enough surrounding communities that would want to do that with us and explore that, or show us a strong three, strong team.
You know, and I, I'm glad this discussion is opening up on this board with this, this, my committee report, it's good to have discussions. But, um, I'm just a figurehead with just two side pieces. If anybody else around this board got any ideas of moving things forward with athletic programs, throw it at me before I can, before I can bring it forward for, um, you know, for that discussion that we have, the three of us to make happen. We sit down with the superintendent, because, um, my ideals are not always the best ideals, they're just ideals, so.
I'd like to put on, for maybe a discussion, I, I'm concerned about, um, Title IX, equal representation. If, if we've, we've got to have the same number of sports offered to girls that we do for boys. Now, if we don't have enough participants to do that sport, then that's one thing. But if we don't offer it, and we offer more boy sports than we do girl sports, uh, that we could be cheating on violation of Title IX.
That is, that's a direct violation.
Yeah. So, I, you know, want, want, want you to look at that, because, I'm, we talking to athletic committee. I said on this board, I'm very supportive of athletics, I didn't know we had a cross country team. Nobody on this board knew we had a cross country team. The athletic coordinator didn't even know we had a cross country team. So, how do we have a cross country team if nobody know we had a cross country team? And if we did have a recognized cross country team, was it offered to girls? Because I know it was only boys, it was three boys.
You gotta offer it to girls too.
So, we, you know, you can offer it, now if they don't participate, that's one thing, but not offering it, that's a violation of the Title IX.
And, and you say this because this comes back to us.
Yeah.
When, when we, when we come, we gotta answer somebody for this. And I'm not saying the cross country was something bad, I mean, we would have supported, we still, we do support it, but we want to make sure it's, it's done by the guidelines. You know, you got, you gotta run your race inside the lane, so we might as well make sure we, we're in our lane, because if we're not, it's gonna come back on us. We would be penalized, we would be penalized hardly by the state of Michigan if we don't do what we're supposed to, especially when it comes to athletics.
What if somebody, cross country, run hills and dales and hop over valleys and streams? What if somebody broke their ankle, blew their knee out? And it comes to the board, and we talking about, we didn't even know we had a team. We look like we got eggs on our head. So, you know, dumb, but.
And that's a direct, that's a direct over, over, that's a direct program that the building principal, that falls right in his lap. So, if he didn't know, we got issues.
We did know, it was brought up in the athletic committee meeting that there was a cross country team.
The one, the first one.
The first one, yeah, Mr. Perryman did bring it up, so we were aware that there was a cross country team, there was only one or two?
There was three, and that was, that was when the rest of the board members found out too.
Yeah.
So, what Mr. Rigman's talking about, we didn't know during the time it was happening, we knew only when Mr. Perryman was in that committee meeting. I wish that committee meeting was my fault, I, I got the shoulders, I, he can stand on my shoulders, I'm, I'm broad enough. I should have had a committee meeting sooner than what I had, and it probably would have been brought out even sort of. But nonetheless, that still should have been brought out to us for us to know what was going on.
Let me just, let me just say this, I think we give way too many passes of things that could, that could affect this district in a negative manner. We just give way too many passes. That is not a pass that we can just look, oh, well, we knew about it and we, eh, no! If you got a boys, you got a, you got a boys cross country, you must offer girls cross country. That's policy. That is policy, that is policy. So, I don't, I don't get it, you know, well, no, that's a violation of policy, period.
Now, I'm gonna say this too, it wasn't about not having a committee meeting that we didn't know about it.
Right.
We should have knew about it with, with or without a committee meeting.
We didn't have a committee meeting for the football team and we knew we had a football team.
Yeah, so I, I'm not gonna say I'm gonna be at fault, but I'm gonna let you know that the information that got simulated for us, it came from me, it because of that meeting, and that's, that's how it went, so.
At, at least when I ran cross country in school, it was coed, is, is our cross country coed?
Well, we don't know. We don't know if it was offered to girls. It was?
I ran a few marathons, but that's, that's all I can do, don't throw a ball at me, I won't catch it. Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions, comments, concerns on agenda item nine D? Hearing the saying nine, moving the agenda item ten. Ms. O'Neil.
I didn't have any comment.
That was a comment. Thank you. Ms. Collins.
Uh, I have quite a few comments, I think, but I'll try and narrow them down. I heard a lot of, I, I went to a very positive event, and it turned into a lot of negative, and I heard a lot of insults. I just want to say thank you to everyone who's coming forward with their time, whether big or small, it's needed. If you can contribute more, please do, because we need it, we need the volunteers. On the other, the next comment, I want to say how great it is that we received this grant from the Detroit Lions. I know grant funding is spent very specific, um, one thing I would like to see, um, because this is football money, they did get jerseys this year. They had two New Jerseys, I believe. Can we get an inventory of what the football program has before we just start cutting checks and sending money? That way they're getting what they need and not.
Not black.
Let's get them what they need.
Not black.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go there, I'm gonna go somewhere else. Well, to that, to your point, Jamie, I'm sorry, to your, to your point, that's the, that is the function of the head football coach is to take inventory and he is to turn in the inventory sheet and everything before he gets his check.
Exactly.
So, I'm gonna.
Uh, and I, I am gonna comment on the, the black jerseys as well. I am all for themed games, if our kids want to have themed games, please enjoy it, every school district is doing it. As long as the coaches are following the proper channels to have team games, themed games, um, it's something that's happening in every district, and they are huge. These are big events, and I don't want to see our kids miss out on it, simply because we have alumni who don't stand at that mic. If you're saying it on Facebook, it shouldn't be a concern, bring it to the mic and tell us directly. The issues we had in nineteen eighty-five are not the issues we have and that we are facing now. We need to move forward in a positive direction and leave the past in the past. Stay with the history, enjoy the alumni, enjoy, enjoy that, don't lose the history, but understand that we need to move forward in a direction that is best for our kids. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Reno.
Today is National Educational Support Professionals Day, so I just want to give a thank you to all of our district support staff. Without our support staff, our school couldn't function, and thank you for all the work that you guys do. We appreciate it, and you're helping our kids, so, that's all, thanks.
Thank you for that point, Mr. Reno. Dr. McFadden.
Thank you, sir, appreciate this time to talk on the mic. For I found something very interesting tonight, Mr. Reno is an athlete, I am so happy to know that. He has ran marathons, and he had like a marathon is easy to do, well, I got news for you, I'm not gonna run a marathon.
I'm never doing another one.
It's not gonna happen. So, you are an athlete, welcome to the athletic committee, I appreciate that.
Welcome to the less than one percent of the population that's done that, that's the club.
Just, just strike that, don't even listen to that, all right?
The three of us.
We, um, got some good information today about some money that we can utilize to make the district better. I am excited about that, I'm excited to see new programs that's going to be coming into position that we're gonna, we wanna vet and make sure they work. And I, I want to see like the parent academy, I, I like that, that's a great idea. I want to see or hear if, if it, if it passed the, you know, the litmus test, I like to see here food carts on the floors, you know, where they can have these snacks to eat every now and then, healthy foods, of course. I like to see, you know, we might have some weekly pet rallies with some individuals like the Voice to come in, uh, rah rah, get us up and going. I like to see, um, uh, weekly student goodie bags that, uh, Mr. Monk was bringing forward about, you know, hygiene and personal equipment and stuff. These things, I think, will make us better. I think, will make us better. Um, right now, they had a world summit, I believe, uh, the, uh, somewhere with, uh, our president, uh, climate control. Well, we got climate control. We need to do it right here in this school district. Um, the temperature's not as hot as it should be in some areas and it's too hot in others. So I'm pretty sure that as a collective community, the district, our staff, and the students, talking about you, young man behind that, that, behind that, uh, yeah, you. I would, I'd turn the camera on, put it on you right now, but I can't. Even the students, I want your input. Because you guys know what y'all need.
No, thanks.
And what y'all want. So if you can give us that information, it's not the time to be silent. Okay? So I'm excited. Uh, we got some money to spend. But like I said, I just don't want to spend money just because money's there to spend. That's stupid. I'm not gonna never do that. I've done that before. And that's not gonna happen if I, if I have anything to say about it. Sir, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just, my comment's gonna be short. I would just like to wish everyone in the district, uh, a very, very happy holiday. Enjoy family if you can. And have a great Thanksgiving. And don't eat too much. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Ms. Walker.
Um, share the good. I like that. That was a great idea. Um, I just wanted to welcome Josie Viviano to our staff. I think she'll be a great addition. And it would be great if the parents came out on November thirtieth and let your voice be heard. So you can help us decide and be a part of what's best for you and your kids moving forward with this money. It's a lot of money and, um, we want to hear what you think we need to do with it. Cause all, everybody's opinion matters. And, um, like Mr. Monk said, have a safe and healthy and blessed Thanksgiving. Enjoy your time off with your family. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I'd like to say thank you to Raymond James Associates for their generous donation, as well as Detroit Lion Foundation for, uh, their, their generous donation. Uh, I would like to say congratulations to the girls volleyball team, uh, because of having a girls volleyball team and be able to compete the entire season. So congratulations, uh, to those young ladies who stepped, who stepped up and stuck in there and stuck with the program, uh, the whole entire year. Uh, crack, congratulations to the football team. Uh, even though superintendent said they had a, a four and five record, uh, because of the way that they, the point system that they provide, uh, to make it to the state playoffs. Um, we were able to make it, uh, to the state playoffs. This is the first time Mount Clemens School has been, uh, in a playoff in probably twenty-one years. Now, you're gonna have some old schoolers say, well, we were Class A and we were Class B and we were Class C. Well, our students are, are in the division they were in and they qualified for state. So, you know, that, that was a, a tremendous accomplishment in my, in my perspective, uh, for, for those student athletes. Uh, kudos to them. Although they, you know, they, they got beat in the opening round of the district playoffs, they were there. There were a lot of other teams that did not make it. Uh, so congratulations to them. And congratulations to the cross-country team. Um, if you're watching this, you know, we get a lot of discussion a, around the table about trying to generate ideas and concepts, uh, that we can put into play over the next couple of years to, uh, help our students. Again, this is an open invitation, uh, for your input. Um, there are no dumb ideas. Uh, they're just ideas. Um, and some of those ideas and maybe all the ideas, hopefully, uh, we can make them work, uh, on behalf of us and our students. But this is not the time to be silent. Um, we would hope that your, uh, requests, your ideas, your information i- is in a positive vein. Because all the ideas and thoughts, comments that I heard around this room tonight, uh, none of them were in the negative vein. So I, I would hope that your input is in a positive vein. Because that's what we're reaching out to you in a positive manner. Because the superintendent could have just did this, uh, with her staff, with her school improvement teams. But we wanted to go beyond and reach all of our stakeholders. Uh, so you can have a part, uh, in this process. Uh, is, I know it's a short window, but it is a window, um, of opportunity. So we would definitely encourage, um, your feedback, your input, or your suggestions and your ideas. Um, sad to say that COVID is on the rise, uh, in Michigan. Uh, if you, if you listen to the news, there, there are school districts around the metro, metropolitan area that are talking about going back to hybrid or going to virtual learning one or two days, one or two d- days a week. Uh, I don't, I don't believe we're at any, based on the information that we received from the superintendent, there, there is no reason for the Mount Clemens Community School District to have a different design of how we're interacting and, uh, teaching our students right now that's in person. Uh, but we can only ask that you be vigilant, um, that you stay safe, uh, to keep yourself and, and other people happy. Um, everyone at this table has some type of face covering on. Uh, most of the people in this room have some type of face covering. So you, you need to do what you need to do in order to keep yourself safe and others safe. Because as they're saying, you might not get COVID and get sick, but you might be asymptomatic, asymptomatic and give it to somebody who can't, who won't make it, who can't survive it. So, uh, just be cautious, particularly in this time. We're, we're going back inside because of the weather. Uh, we have been around, be around more people uh, because of last year, you being quarantined and shut away from people. This year, uh, during this holiday season, people will be gathering and getting together and hugging and in close proximity and eating and drinking and laughing. And just stay vigilant, stay healthy, um, so we can keep everyone healthy. I think those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute, support.
Moved by Member Monk, seconded by Member McFadden. Call a roll, please.
Okay, uh, Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries at nine fifty in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.